Call to order the city council meeting for CDB's Grand Forks for September fifteenth, twenty twenty is now five o'clock. Would city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Speaker Andrew, Council President Mark Olson.
Here.
Council Vice President Jack Grassel.
Here.
Council member Clarence Better.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Martha Demers.
President.
Does turn. Coram, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval minutes for the August twenty-fifth work session, September first council meeting, and September eighth work session. Is there motion?
Move.
By Reapell.
Second.
Second by Helms. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Demers?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Scheduled bidletting is none. Scheduled public hearings, none. Consent agenda items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be polled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Any council members like any of the consent agenda polled four through ten? I see none. Can you contain a motion?
Move four through ten.
Move by Grassel.
Second.
Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Demers?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledged or received are reports of officers, boards, and commissions. Regular meeting minutes of water, light, power, and building commission for August nineteenth, twenty twenty. Communication. CDB's Grand Forks would like to acknowledge and thank Randy Olson for his plus thirty-four years of service. Mr. Olson will be retiring from public works on September thirtieth. Mrs. Stordahl, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Randy. He's been a super huge asset to the department throughout the years that I've worked there, and I'm sure before I became Public Works Director. He's not only a great worker, but a great person. He's a role model to a lot of the younger guys coming up. And he's just had an outstanding work ethic, and he was an asset to our department, and I think the city over the last year. So just wanted to thank him, have a lot of respect for him, and hope he has a good time of retirement.
Any else? Mayor?
I just want to say I'll miss him too, because every time I meet him running a payloader through town, he's got the big old grin on his face. I've always thought of people I know, he found the right job for himself. Just seemed in such a good groove, enjoying it seemed like every part of the job. We're going to miss him for sure. Thanks.
Any else? Have any comments? Mr. Helms?
Yeah, Mayor, you're probably lucky he's retiring because he was probably aiming at payloader towards your car. Jason, are we going to be able to get Randy in person here so we can thank him, or will he not do that?
I'm not sure. I talked to him and let him know that we'd be speaking about him a little bit tonight, and he thanked me for that. And I just wasn't sure with the whole COVID thing, if I should be bringing him in or not, or what the feeling was.
Right. Yeah, no, he has been a great guy, and he's always had a, as the mayor said, always had a smile on his face, you know, and that's hard to find in workers nowadays, you know. So, yeah, we'll definitely miss him. There's no doubt. So tell him thank you for us.
Any else? Have any?
Absolutely.
I worked with Randy for over twenty years, and everything that these guys have been saying about him is absolutely true.
Good.
I would just, I'd say most people, when they retire, you wish them sunny beaches and vacations. I think Randy is the one guy that you say, hopefully it snows a lot for you. Because I think he's the one guy that it seems like he's about as happy as can be when it starts snowing. So again, thank you.
All right, move on to old business. There's none. New business, number thirteen, consider adoption resolution two zero dash zero nine dash five nine, proving the preliminary twenty twenty tax levy collectible in twenty twenty-one for a total of five million seven and fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars, and set the public budget meeting for December first, twenty twenty, at six o'clock, with a continuance hearing if necessary from December fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Move.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Reapell. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Demers?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number fourteen, consider approving a special event application for Sacred Heart Church, allowing a section of Third Street Northwest to be closed on Sunday, September twenty-seventh, from four thirty till nine PM for a drive-in movie.
I'll move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Demers?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider approving the bonfire application for Sacred Heart School, allowing a bonfire in LeFevre Park on Saturday, October third, from eight thirty to ten thirty PM.
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Helms?
Thank you. Mr. President, I'm assuming that they'll have their social distancing, and they'll have that stuff all in order, huh? I would guess.
And from what I understand, there's only going to be approximately a hundred students that would be participating in this event.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? That roll call, please.
Demers?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number sixteen, consider authorizing city staff to execute a quitclaim deed for the property located at two twenty-one Central Avenue Northwest, transferring the city-owned property to the state of Lauren D. Mitchell.
Move.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Helms. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Demers?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider adoption resolution two zero dash zero nine dash six zero, accepting the two hundred and fifty thousand from Polk County, distribute to East Grand Forks businesses, accepting the hundred and twenty-five thousand from Polk County, distribute to rural businesses, and establishing a grant relief fund to distribute funds to businesses.
Move.
Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Reapell. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that's earmarked, that's from Polk County earmarked for rural businesses, is that, I forget if that, is that the entire pot that Polk County is allowing for those rural businesses, or are we just taking care of ex-townships around the city, or what?
You may want to talk to Paul about that. I do know that I just kind of looked into it, and that's why I drafted the resolution, because I was drafting up agreements for these grants that we're going to be distributing. Because typically, you'd have a promise written, you'd have a loan agreement, but since we're giving out potentially grants, I was drafting that.
Gorty, raise your hand.
Yes, we are sharing the responsibility with Cassie over in Boston for working with the businesses that, for each of us, it's going to be the businesses that's closer to our community most likely. And I do not know if Crookston's got a share in that as well or not. I don't know.
So how are you going to tabulate when you hit one hundred and twenty-five thousand if you've got possibly three different entities running it?
We will put it all together, and so that there's one master list, so there's no duplication.
Well, it's my understanding that the one hundred and twenty-five thousand, we're actually getting that, and then if there's going to be distributions from Boston or these other locales, they will have their own pot of money, correct, Paul?
That was not my understanding, Ron, but I can follow up on that.
That was my understanding, but I could be wrong.
I guess, I'm just wondering why the county isn't doing it. It seems like they have, I guess, except for the county or the townships that are right around our deal, I don't know. It could leave. I think there's a potential for some, I guess, perceived bad faith or some. I'm not saying that there would be. I'm just saying, all of a sudden, if we promote it to, you know, businesses that are in and around East Grand Forks, and all of a sudden they're getting it in the Fisher area, is it going to come down like East Grand Forks is doing this? Or, I guess, I don't know.
Mr. Gorty?
The county does not have an economic development arm, and asks us and asks Austin, since we had talked originally, and I suspect they're also dealing with Crookston the same way, if we could fulfill that role in the areas around our communities.
If you take a look at that sheet that we used in our committee meeting, our working group, I believe one twenty-five is the total disbursement for rural and township coming out of the county to share amongst the whole county.
Just to add to that, they submit applications, so they'll have all these applications, so they'll be able to look at them. Some will qualify, though some will be thrown out because they don't qualify. Say you get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in applications, which community gets to decide which ones get thrown out?
When I've talked with Cassie and with the county, we were always thinking that we would prorate anything that, where the funds were inadequate to cover the entire need.
So they might only get three grand?
I just, I'm not, I don't think it's a bad idea to get a hundred and twenty-five thousand in there. I just, it's got to go through a process, and just wondering why we're going to become the stewards of it. I understand that there's no economic development arm of the county, I guess, but it kind of puts us in a bad spot, maybe, potentially.
Any else? Have anything? That roll call, please.
Demers?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number eighteen, claims consider authorizing city minister to clerk treasurer to issue payment of recumbent bills and payroll.
Move.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Helms. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Demers?
Yes.
Better?
Yeah.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Speaker?
Okay, I'll start my public service announcement. Tim?
Well, that was Mr., that was our attorney that-
That's right, that was you, Ron, public service announcement. So, first of all, we are close to finalizing, and maybe Mr. Gorty will give us an update. The COVID Business Redevelopment Grant Program, so that application is probably just rounding the bend with review from our finance director, our city attorney, and the EDA board. So thank you to you, Mr. Gorty, Mike Puckshewinsky, everybody on the working group that came together, and finally the EDA that's going to, that's going to move that over the finish line. Number two, so that you all know, we're now talking about twentieth and fifth street rehab. Steve Emery took our suggestion, and as you recall, the street is broken down beyond its usable life, and we came with some ideas on total street replacement that were cost prohibitive. And Mr. Emery, again, city engineer, has taken a look, and while he still recommends full replacement from an engineering standpoint, anything else, you're going to have maybe some dissimilar materials below grade that could start some moving and whatnot. So he does have a concern about anything but street replacement, and yet if that's cost prohibitive, he has come with a scope of work that would create a more of a limited street repair, street reconstruction. And so please, you all, consider how we might work with that. I would imagine we'd want to get back with the residents and have that conversation about what their options would be. He even has an idea in that scope of work, what the cost would be per family, kind of a preliminary assessment role to have an idea if they want to come forward and ask for that. I understand it comes by petition from the residents, if it's going to happen. But they should know what the options are, and I do appreciate, Mr. Emery, you're putting that together as a limited scope of work that would hopefully bring it in line with the budgets of those families, and thank you. Finally, there's been some concern about the disparity in the closing times. As you remember, Mr. Mayor Bochensky came up with an eleven, an o'clock closing for establishments in Grand Forks. They were seeing a spike in COVID cases with UNE coming back into session. The recommendation that he received and chose to act on was to close some establishments at eleven o'clock, creating the disparity where there was some traffic coming over between eleven and one into Minnesota. Well, that'll be reversed. Mayor Bochensky has reversed that executive order effective, I believe it's Wednesday, and so very, very soon, that disparity will be erased, and we'll be back to business as usual. That's all I have. Thanks.
It wasn't a disparity for us. It wasn't anything we had an issue with. I think we, in my opinion, I don't think the ask of us closing at eleven o'clock was right. As many times that we were in the spot, they ran, and they did nothing. So, too bad. Mr. Grassel?
Just a couple reminders. Now that I'm working at the south end of East Grand Forks, that intersection at Bigland Road and Thirteenth and Greenway Boulevard, we need to figure something out.
Agreed.
We are, we're going to lose somebody. In fact, we just about lost one, according to the lady that called me on the phone this afternoon and said, there was a car parked going to turn left off, or off Bigland onto Thirteenth, and of course, the kid was walking. Car went flying right by. I don't know what we can do, but I, it's going to be a bad news situation. So I told her that I would bring this up tonight. We got to figure out something. I don't know if we can even, I know that the chief, we're strapped for police right now, but even if we have a presence there to slow those people down, I mean, it's forty miles an hour constant.
Or more.
Or more.
Whatever happened to the crossing guard program that we used to have when we were kids? They could put a crossing guard out there at the appropriate times, because it wouldn't take anyone to have something.
Yeah, but the problem is, that's, that's not even by the building. You know what I mean? That's, how do I, how do I get a, you know what I mean? Now I'm, now I'm driving two out to get, I mean, that used to be the day where we used to cross in, where just the ways out there. I mean, and that road, I mean, I'm going to ask for volunteers, but we just have to try to figure something out that slows people down. I know we asked for that HOCS system, and that was too much. We've got the flashing lights, and that doesn't seem to, I think it's like they think it's yellow light, you need to speed up to get through before-
Maybe we need Sheriff Tannen to do like Sheriff Bob used to do, where he was out there every morning at Schrader down there.
We got to think of something.
I will tell you a couple of ideas that Lou Tassa had. We met for that very purpose in the last year, and Lou had an idea to try to pursue a twenty mile an hour speed limit for the school zone right on Bigland Road. And I think we could still move on that. About the time we were talking about this is when COVID hit. And Lou also thought, maybe through the DNR, that we could find funding outside of the city for a road to connect the two schools on the backside.
Through the DNR?
No, no, I didn't mean DNR, MINDOT.
MINDOT.
MINDOT, my bad. So through MINDOT, to connect the two schools on the backside. So at least some of that, where they're in, out, in, out to drop at two schools, you could pick that up on the backside.
It would be manly for busing, wouldn't it?
For busing, as well as for cars, if it could fit in there. That was an idea that Lou had, and he said, we may be able to fund something like that. We were pushing hard for a full signalized intersection at that corner, and we're debating whether that would even add a measure of safety. There's at least someone whose eyes and forehead I can see there on the screen who would say it does not add a measure of safety to put a full signalized intersection for pedestrians in particular. And I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I have my own opinion that does not agree with that. And yet, there it is. So we're kind of hung. So the hope would be to do some of these other things first. If we could get the twenty mile an hour speed limit at that point, and even maybe closer to the middle school, that might calm the traffic, and you could, then you'd have something you could enforce as a first step. Steve and Nancy, was there any progress made in that?
I did submit a request to Michelle Roderod with MINDOT, who is the traffic engineer in District Two. I would have to go back. I do not believe we have heard back from them, so that's something I could follow up with Michelle again and see if we could treat that as a school zone and reduce the traffic to twenty miles an hour.
During school times?
So I will follow up on that. And then we did, we did do some preliminary sketches for that road behind the school, and that's something I guess I could kind of share with the council too, and, you know, get some feedback from you. Some of my initial discussions with Mike Colness didn't sound like the school really had any money to help pay for that road. So, you know, I think we would have to try to seek other funding sources for that, for that option, too.
It did sound like Lou Tassa may have a pool of funds outside of any of our normal funds to go to that road. It wouldn't be our maintenance fund. It wouldn't be our normal dispersal we get every three, four years. It'd be a source of funding outside of any of the normal funding. That was close to a million dollars, was it, Steve? Some number? I'm going off of memory here. Yep, Nancy's saying yes.
Yep.
All right. Problem is, is it's not a public road back there. You know, I mean, it's, it would be a school road, basically, right? I mean, it's on school property, so you'd kind of have some issue.
Relief on Bigland and Thirteenth.
And that was, my point I was going to make is, the issue that that would try to solve is some of the bus issues, but it's, the buses make it a catastrophe. The, just regular traffic makes it very dangerous. You know, I mean, the, like, the situation that Mr. Grassel was talking about, where you have a car in, a car or two in the left turn lane, and then you have other cars out there, you can't see a thirteen-year-old kid or less. You know, you just can't. There's no way to see them. So, and I, I get that people, I come there, whenever I come to a complete stop, whether the lights are flashing or not, because I can't, you can't see kids. You can't see anything, whether I bike or not. So, and they come out of the blue. You know, you think, you see one cross, and you'd think that would be the end of it, but no, there's some other kid that's trailing behind or whatever. And so I agree. I mean, it's, it is a terrible intersection, and I can't imagine it getting any better without some sort of geometric change or whatever. And it mostly has to do with visibility, right? I mean, I think obviously the speeds and everything could slow people down. I think the thing that would, that would do is potentially take a fatal accident to make it a very, you know, a major, major injury. Hopefully, you know, that would be the benefit of that.
I've already been one there.
Right.
I T-boned on a motorcycle.
And my point is, is it's, it's a visibility issue, and it's, and it's bad. And you'd be amazed at how many kids, whether it's fall now or spring, but even in the winter, it's, it's, kids are walking through there, which is a great thing. We want to encourage that. I just don't know if we want to think a little bit more outside of the box and maybe think about, you know, is there a way that you can move, you know, right now, the only way kids can get across is in that intersection. I don't know if there's a way that you can move, I don't know if it's even more safe or not, but move the pedestrian crossings across Bigland further away, like in the middle of the thing, and put, you know, I don't know, we, we should have those old pedestrian crossing lights that we took down off of Bigland when it was by Crestwood School. You know, that's, they crossed right in the middle of the road, and the lights were flashing and those type of things. But at least there was two cars going one way, and you could see for a quarter mile each way. You know, I mean, right now, those kids are coming in, in those corners and stuff, and there's three cars across, and everybody's trying to make a left turn and shoot the, shoot the gap, because your time is a couple seconds, you know, so.
We did, excuse me, we did discuss that, moving them up further north on Bigland and putting the HOCS system in there, which physically stops vehicles like a, like a stop signal would, or a traffic signal.
I thought you meant like spikes.
Pardon me?
Just kidding.
But what we found is that a majority of the people that are coming from the west side on Greenway Boulevard, they're not going to come to that intersection, head north, two, three hundred feet, cross, and then head back south.
Right.
But it, it was an option that was discussed. Same with an overpass and an underpass.
Cost prohibitive.
Well, if you had some type of an additional access to those two schools, there's a lot of cities that would say you can't take a left-hand turn within this two-hour or this hour timeframe, which would prevent a lot of, a lot of the incidents that you're talking about, as long as you had a different access to both of the schools.
Only what, that is the only way is a left-hand turn.
I mean, I'm no engineer, but I'm just saying, that seems to be half the problem.
The feeling also we got from Lou is Lou Tassa, again, MINDOT, traffic engineer that controls some of the funding, he would say, let's try these things first, and then if they are still not doing the job, we'll go on to the next thing. So you always, he tries to try the simple things first, the reduced speed, the this, the that, and none of it was definitive there. That's all, and we're done. The goal is to keep putting these measures in until the goal is accomplished. But thank you, Steve Emery, for, for kind of warming that up and trying to get that ball rolling again.
Yep. I will get ahold of Michelle.
Mr. Helms?
Mr. Grassel? Yeah. I was just, Mr. Grassel, I just had a meeting with Chief Hedlin yesterday on the same issue, but I was referring to the Riverside Christian School on Second Avenue, because that's a drag race. That's a, it's horrible there. They still, and they've done everything, the stop signs, the reflectors on the poles, and I talked to him a little bit about maybe we could do a citizens patrol type thing and get some citizens to come out and stand there rather than having kids and whatever. I think if we could somehow put a word out there somehow in a paper or something, and see if anybody'd be interested in working those a little bit, I'd be willing to do it, but I can't do it every day, you know. I mean, it would be, I think, I know what you're talking, because I'm sitting there right on Second Avenue there, and it's horrible. You never know. So I did talk to him a little bit about that, and maybe we should look at doing that, just see if we can, like, that's what they do in Grand Forks at some of those schools. They got parents or citizens, whatever, come out and just volunteer their time.
That's my next step. So that's where we're headed.
So.
Anything else you have, while you have the floor?
That's it.
Anything else other than that?
Oh, anything else? No, I don't think so. I was gonna, I was actually going to bring this up when it was my turn, so I guess we're good.
Mr. Vedder?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Reapell?
I'm good.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing.
Mr. Demers? Mr. Murphy?
Yes, I do have one thing. I was hoping to get a chance to speak with the mayor prior to the meeting here tonight, but that, that did not work. What I just would like to bring up is that, starting here in mid-September, you will be able to vote absentee ballot. Those will start to be going out, and I want to remind everybody that there is the measure on the ballot for amending the city's charter, and I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that that is out there. If they have any questions, they certainly can call City Hall. We will answer them. But what we are looking at is trying to update the city charter. It had not been updated for more than forty years, and we want to bring it current. So I will take any questions.
Billston?
I have nothing other than it's nice to be sitting in the same room as those staring at John's screen.
You're here. Mr. Emery?
I have nothing else, thank you, unless anyone has any questions.
Anything from the department heads?
If one thing quick.
Let Nancy go first, and then I'll go to Chief, and then I'll go to Mr. Gorty.
Just a quick reminder that all census information needs to be filled out by the end of September. So if you haven't done so, or if there are any community members that have not done so, please fill out your census information. It's extremely important for the city, the number of our programs, and without it, you know, that could be a reduction in state aid dollars, housing dollars, transportation dollars. So we really need it. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Chief Hedlin?
Yeah, I was just going to touch base on the traffic control in the, in the areas of the schools. We have tried to do some down there. I was down at Thirteenth and Bigland first full day of school in the morning, but our problem is, especially these, last week and this week, we are short-staffed with a number of people. They're out of town at various things, so we haven't had the luxury of having extra bodies to be able to keep at those places. I'm out of town today and tomorrow. I will give Mr. Grassel a call tomorrow during the day. Maybe he and I can, can discuss some ideas and try to get some ways to get some extra enforcement down there. We'll certainly work on that. We also had some complaints in the, in the New Heights area, so we had officers watching some of the spots up there this week as well. So unfortunately, there's a lot of-
A lot of traffic. Oh, you got muted. Anything else, Chief?
Can you, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yep.
I didn't, I didn't think I was muted, but apparently I was automatically muted and had to do a star six to bits. You can hear me, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I was saying that, I apologize, we've had, we've attempted to do some of some traffic control in the, in the areas of the schools. I was at Thirteenth and Bigland on the morning, the first full day of school, but we've had,